It's 5:30. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Has commissioners reviewed the agenda? Any items to add or change?
No, sir.
No.
I'd like to move Item C of Consent Agenda into Items for Commission Action. So if there's no other modifications to the agenda, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we adopt the agenda.
Second.
With the modification of...
With the modification of removing C, excuse me.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is Presentations. And at this time, I'd like to turn over to Chief Harrison.
Evening, Mayor. Tonight, I have three personnel that I'm pleased to introduce to you. I should've brought them up here sooner, but here we are tonight. So the first person, Alexis, if you'd come up here and stand next to me, please. This is Alexis Sanders. She's been with the Police Department for a little over three months. Before she came to work with us, she worked for the Sheriff's Office for two and a half years. We're excited to have her on our team. She's looking forward to the growth and experience that she'll have working with us. And in her free time, she's a mother to two children. And she also volunteers on the crisis text line and likes to lift weights. So, be nice, I guess. Marissa, if you'll stand up, please. This is Marissa Peck. She just got married during Neo-Walla, so we're excited for her and that change in her life. She's originally from Deering, Kansas, moved to Coffeyville when she was about nine. And before she worked here, she worked for a company called Mosaic, taking care of intellectually disabled persons. She's also worked some number of other odd jobs and had some college. And she wants to be a dispatcher because she wants to continue a life of service. So we're excited to have her, and we congratulate her on her big change in her life. And John, if you'll come up. This is Officer John Anderson. He just graduated from academy in time to get himself worked to death during Neo-Walla. So we were really grateful to have John onboard, and we walked him pretty good all throughout the Neo-Walla, so I'm sure he got broken right. He graduated from Cherryvale High School, attended Coffeyville Community College, and enlisted in the Army. Got sentenced to three years in Hawaii, it sounds like. He has a son that's three years old, and he also wanted to be a police officer or join our team because he wanted to help his community. So it's exciting to see three young motivated people that are ready to live a life of service and understand why we're here. So I'm going to have Mr. Schwenker swear John in.
I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties of police officer...
And faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
For the City of Independence, Kansas.
For the City of Independence, Kansas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
The next item on the agenda is the adoption of the Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Items for Commission Action. Item C, it was removed from the Consent Agenda. Consider authorizing upfitting Car 1 as a K-9 patrol unit through TCS upfitting. And I'd ask this to be removed so we could get a little more information of the plan and what's going on. Chief?
Well, as you recall from previous budget processes, one of the challenges that was presented, it actually started internally in the Police Department. We had an officer that, or several officers, that supported bringing a K-9 back to Independence. The city manager challenged me to make that happen whenever we spoke about it. You guys challenged me to develop a high-quality program for the, you know, we wanted to get as much as we could out of a K-9 program if we're going to invest in it. So we're doing everything we can to have a top-shelf program whenever we start it. And the goal is to have that going by sometime in early to mid-2019. So part of that process, though, in building up to that, we planned our vehicle purchasing, as you recall, for this year around that process so that we have taken a vehicle out of circulation, and it is now ready and waiting to be set up for the K-9s. We're trying to get these things in place. We've been working with a local donor. We have, the kennel is currently under construction as well. So we're excited about that. And as Commissioner Hogshead was so kind to point out, I'm looking a little bit shaggy. We did a No Shave November, and all the officers that are participating had to make a donation to the K-9 fund, so we're doing that. And then in December, you should be seeing some jars around town for a Best Beard contest. So one of the officers said, "What's the criteria? How do we know who the best beard is going to be?" And I said, "I guess it just depends on what the community thinks is the best beard picture." So I guess we'll find out what the community thinks. And so hopefully, we'll raise a significant amount of money for our K-9 program through that. So tonight, you're asking me about the car. We applied for a grant with the Community Chest, and the purpose of that grant was to fund the upfitting of a car. And so to have all the safety features that our donors and other K-9 teams have talked to us about, we came, we worked with the, with an upfitter that we've used for the last two years to outfit our patrol cars. They do a fantastic job. They, their upfitting comes with a lifetime warranty on their service as well as a manufacturer's warranty on the product that is installed. They also have 48 hours to do any repairs onsite in Independence. So they've been an outstanding company. They do excellent customer service. They're also bringing free to police departments a laser training firearm, firearms training system so that we can, it doesn't count for our state qualification, but it's the free service that they provide so that our firearms instructors will be able to work at the shift level. We can borrow this, and we can do it right in the station whenever the officers are on duty to get a little extra training. So they're a great organization, and they take care of their law enforcement customers that they work with. $4,000 of the upfitting will be covered under the grant. $2,632.35 will come out of the Law Enforcement Trust Fund. And that's a fund that's set aside and protected for law enforcement use only, non-budgeted items. And it's funded from drug seizures. So I think that it is entirely fitting that our local drug traffickers are going to pay for our K-9 program, and I can't be more excited about that.
Do you have a total budget for the program yet?
I do have a total budget, but I did not bring that with me tonight. I apologize. I think it's going to be somewhere around $13,000 is my estimate.
The quality of the dog is, the price reflects the quality of the dog, too.
The dog is, the dog is the vast majority of that expense. So the process that we've chosen, that we've elected to use for that is through the Kansas Highway Patrol, who has a longstanding reputable K-9 team program. The training's free. Unfortunately, it's 10 weeks long. But when our, when our K-9 handler and team come back, they will have trained together for that timeframe. KHP is also going to select, help us select our dogs. So they're going to go down to the kennel with us in Texas and select that dog for us. So this is a program that's working for other law enforcement agencies around the state that I learned out, learned through networking with, with other K-9 people that have commanded K-9 units. And so we've got a commitment from KHP to support our program throughout as we will continue to train with them. There has to be regular training for that K-9 team. So our officer will be training with Kansas Highway Patrol for the entire program regularly. So I'm, I think we're going to have a very well-done program. The dog will also come with a warranty, so if there's a problem, we should be able to work that out.
You talk about a handler and a team. Will the dog be worked by just one handler? Or will it have multiple handlers that will take the dog?
No, that's, that's probably one of the bigger things that hurts your program. You've got to put that dog with a dependable, solid officer, a good handler that you know is a solid officer and is going to be here and willing to serve in that capacity for, through, really should throughout that dog's career. And so that should be with one handler throughout that dog's career.
So what are you meaning, team?
The K-9 team is the, is the handler and the dog.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's the K-9 team.
Okay.
What's the expected career of a dog?
About eight years-ish, give or take a little bit, six to 10. But probably really eight is about all you can, that's kind of a best-case scenario if I understand correctly from, from those that have been in the business a while.
Okay. So you're looking at, at your best beard competition or for fundraising part of it. Do you think there's any chance of opening it up to the community? Other ways if they would like to contribute?
Thank you for reminding me. We do have, we are working with the, the Foundation in Independence. I can't remember the, Independence...
Community Foundation.
Community Foundation, thank you. We're working with them to get an account started. We're going to be doing a media blitz on that. We'll send all that out to our local media, Facebook, City Facebook. We'll be announcing that, so hopefully, people can just, it'd be as simple as them stopping off and donating money at, at the bank that takes that. The contract should be in my hands any day for that. We have a local donor that has stood for a significant portion of the fees as well. And that's going to be an ongoing process as well, too. And I'm not sure if the donor is ready for me to make that announcement yet. But I do know that we will be publicly announcing that. So yes, this will be, my intention is for this to be a community-supported piece of what we bring to, to serve our community. And I hear tremendous demand for it. You know, my emphasis throughout my career's been on traffic safety. And so when I came here, I started looking at things from a traffic safety perspective. And what I found is that Independence has different needs from other communities. And one of those needs is, as I hear from the citizens, is drug enforcement. And our drug enforcement statistics, I didn't bring them with me tonight, but if I remember right, we're going to be around 77% increase over 2016. When you compare 2018 to 2016, we're projecting about a 77% increase. And we've had some pretty big cases already this year, as I've reported to the commission and to the local media. 2017, I think we had about a 44% increase over 2016. So, you know, we, we hear what the community is saying, and we answer ultimately to the citizens. And they've made that demand. And, you know, it may not seem like we act on that really quickly, but these cases are complicated, they take time. But oftentimes, we'll hear, "Why don't you guys have a K-9?" And, you know, the response is, "We're working on it."
Will the dog be trained for drugs, search for loss...
Yes.
...rescue, and also protection of the officer or apprehension? I'm not sure what that...
Correct.
...term would be called.
As you recall, you, you may recall that whenever we visited about this during the budget process, one, your challenge to me, Mayor, was, "If you're going to do this, you need to do it right, and you need to get everything that you can for the citizens." And so that's brought us to the dual purpose. I, my initial plan was a single-purpose dog because I thought it'd be economical. It'd be a way for us to get the ball rolling and see how things play out, and then we could develop the program as time passed. And as you recall, and the city manager supported that, you know, "Let's get the most bang for the buck. Let's get, let's just get it and get it done." So we're doing it. We're getting it done. We're going to have a dual-purpose dog.
After doing some reading and visiting with some other handlers, the, the protection and the service of a K-9 unit in the department does offer a lot more depth, and it is something that's been lacking. And definitely, if you're going to invest, we want to do it right. We want one that's going to work for the officers and work for the public for protection and addressing our issues. So that was what, looking through the packet and the information you provided, it seemed like to me this was more of a, an open item instead of consent agenda. And then, you know, the questions that have been brought forward tonight, I think are real critical in us getting understanding to convey when we're asked questions about the program, what we see, what's planned, and how, you know, you look at $13,000, sounds like a lot of money. But when you start pricing a dog and you want one that's going to perform, $13,000 isn't very much.
That's right. That's right. And that's, that's kind of the money that's, there are some other expenses in there, too, that just, and I don't have them all with me right now. I wish I could speak with authority on it. I wasn't ready to talk about that. But I appreciate your support of the program as a commission. I appreciate Craig's support and pushing me to make it happen. And I'm excited that the, this is something that came from the officers as well. This wasn't a program that I stepped up and said, "Let's make this happen." This was internally the officers pushed for it, and the community pushes for it. And so, you know, we're here, we're listening, we're ready to serve, and we're going to do it right. When you deal with donors, as you guys probably know, they have concerns that you need to listen to. And I respect that. I respected it. If I, if I'm going to put my hard-earned money into something, I want to know that it's going to be done right. And so when you look at that list of things in that quote, what you're seeing is the, the high-end equipment to protect the dog, protect the dog from if the car should overheat for some reason. You know, these things happen, and sometimes you just can't predict what's going to go wrong with a mechanical or electrical device. Alarm on the officer's person as well at all times. We'll have a cage for the dog in the station, too, so the dog will be brought in and kennelled in the station, not left in the car. So there's, you know, more than anything, what you're looking at there is to protect our community's investment. And as I've told the officers that I'm working with on this, we're only going to get one shot at this. And we have to maintain our community's trust and get it right the first time. So we've, we've done our due diligence and put a lot of thought into this. So it's a, pretty exciting to be a part of it.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Thank you for your presentation. You always seem to have plenty of information available for us to, to go over. And I hope that, I think the community will get behind this. We'll be able to raise the additional money and, and move forward on this. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys.
Any more questions?
No, I have none.
If there's no further questions, then I'll call for a motion.
I move to authorize the Police Department to upfit Car 1 as a K-9 patrol unit through TCS upfitting, as quoted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda. Item A, consider recommendation from the Planning Commission to adopt an ordinance implementing text amendments to the Code of the City of Independence, Kansas specifically. Appendix B, zoning code relating to off-street parking requirements.
In your packets, I included the staff report that was provided to the Planning Commission. I also highlighted all the modifications to code, to the code, and also provided full copies of the code they came from with those highlighted so they could see exactly what we did. And this is the powerpoint of the different things that were done. The, some definitions were modified, and then also some of the off-street parking requirements. What this basically does is allow for gravel parking in the industrial districts if they do meet, still meet the ADA requirements. So this is something new because currently, the off-street parking requirements require hard surface everywhere in all zones. And so this would, unless it's grandfathered in, which we do have a lot of parking lots that are grandfathered in. But this would allow those in those industrial areas. We saw it as a need because some of the, the areas, it just doesn't seem to fit. They're already industrial zones. You know, you're already having some activities and things there, and it seemed like this would be a good place to start, and it would possibly foster some additional expansions.
I had a question in reading through it. The way it reads, the way I understood it, that a new, a new business coming in to build in an M1 or M2 district, that they can go with gravel parking lot instead of a hard surface. And in doing that, then you could have a significant area of gravel that could create additional problems. Was the original intent to deal with parking lots that were already gravel and how they could be expanded?
It was...
And not making them pave everything?
Mm-hmm.
Or, you know, I guess I'm, I'm concerned with if a standard motor's built, that you have that magnitude of a parking lot, all gravel, then in the hard rains, the gravel washing onto our streets or into our drainage areas. Whereas if you've got an existing gravel lot, like the county or MFG, and they want to add on, we're adding 10 or 15 parking spaces, then that would be appropriate to add gravel there instead of requiring them to hard-surface everything.
Well, they're still going to have to meet all the drainage requirements. They're going to have to meet the screening if they're adjoining residential that's in the, those districts. Because a lot of times, you'll have an M1 that's next to an industrial district. They also can't have dust and things like that. They're supposed to go beyond their boundaries. And it talks about that in the code requirements for those districts.
I noticed in one of the heavy rains we had a few months ago that there was significant gravel washing out into the paved streets from the gravel dallys or from the repairs that increased our maintenance. So, you know, a drainage study is idealistic, but the reality of it working and bringing gravel onto the streets in a large magnitude for a new industry, is it something that the text modification could address existing gravel parking lots? But a new industry would be required to hard-surface?
Well, I mean, you could do it any way you wanted to. Currently, if they have a gravel parking lot that's grandfathered in, then they're fine. But they're not supposed to expand that because it's a non-conforming use. So I mean, it's, it's whatever you gentlemen would prefer. Now, you brought up the example SMP, which is not in the city limits. And then you brought the example of the county parking lot, which wouldn't apply to this because that's in a residential zone. Now, part of it is, their original parking lot is, but their new one...
I was using those for examples of what...
Yeah.
So we can get an idea of the magnitude of parking lot.
Right.
Not theirs, but if that type of operation built in an M1 or M2, we can picture in our mind, looking at the size of the gravel parking lot and wondering, you know, is that what the intent is to allow a new building to have that much gravel? Or are we trying to address the issues of an existing building, an existing manufacturer that has a gravel parking lot that we want to accommodate so it's feasible for them to add on without coming back? And now we're addressing resurfacing their existing lot, too. I guess that was my, my point is, what was the initial purpose? To go to all gravel for industry or to accommodate existing businesses?
Well, it was to provide that as an option for, for any business, whether they wanted to expand or build a new, build new to, as another option for them. But it would have to meet the ADA requirements. And, you know, if you want us to look at some other things, we can do that.
Yeah, because when you look at the ADA requirements, there's even a redundancy in it where it says that you can have gravel, but you have to have striping.
Yeah.
How do you stripe a gravel parking lot?
Yeah, and actually, I visited with David about some of that because there is some other, you know, they did more of a chip and seal or something that was, which basically, our hard surface didn't really address that. So I mean, there's some other things we could look at on that as well. But he said that there was a way that you could, you could stripe some of that. That's, something about the way it's, it's compacted.
But it's still a granular surface.
Yeah.
It's not going to take...
I know. It would, it would be difficult, but...
It's going to be, which, that's not our problem. That's a federal law, and the federal law allows it.
Right, and we have to follow.
But, you know, it's...
And that's what we did. We took it out of...
Right.
...the ADA sources that we had.
I don't know. Yeah, that was my question, if we want to look at an issue of dealing with existing conditions or if we want to allow a, a large industry to gravel a large area of...
Or maybe you want to set a certain size. If it's a parking lot that is over a certain size, it has to be hard surface. You could do that.
Because I know when, while at Fifth and Poplar, there was significant gravel in the drive, the alley is over a block away, that you had to bring a front-end loader to clean up the gravel. And there's still other areas that had significant gravel displaced into the street that created issues.
Right.
So, you know, looking at, at those conditions, you know, that was... What are the other commissioners?
Yeah, I was a little perplexed also. I wasn't sure what was the impetus for even discussing this, but I was, I saw that the Planning Commission voted 6-0 in favor of it. So they clearly had reasons for wanting to do it. But I also can't imagine bringing a new industry into our industrial park and building a new building and then putting gravel parking lot out there. I can't imagine anybody would want to do that, frankly, but I'm not sure we would want to allow it.
A hundred or $200,000 worth of paving.
Yeah.
But, you know, when you're investing that much in a plant, if it's required, you're going to do it. But if it's not, and that's, that was kind of, well, my concern was, too...
And you do have some industries that do have some gravel parking lots. I believe that Hackney has a gravel parking lot. You know, part, they have part that's paved, but I believe they have a portion that isn't. And so it's just kind of, kind of been a mix.
Yeah, I had some of the same concerns that these two gentlemen had, whether this was going to be something that was instituted for a new manufacturer to come in or it was just to give some guideline to the existing ones that we have here. Like I said, I can't imagine coming in and building a, a huge facility and then opting to put gravel surface down. That you would, the requirement would be, it would have to be a hard surface, and that would just be part of the cost of coming in and setting up a manufacturing plant or whatever it is you decide to come in. And that, that would be my, my concern because I wasn't sure what, what you were trying to allude to on this.
Yeah, that is one of the things we do hear from staff as well. Yeah, that is one of the things we do hear from staff, is one of the complaints about the hard surfacing when they come in, and the requirements, and additional costs. So, we were just trying to spur some additional industrial development.
When you say you hear complaints from staff, means-
When they interact with staff, with the, with the prospective industries, and, and even with some of the existing ones, when they want to expand, say they have a gravel lot, well, to expand that technically, they're supposed to go in and make it meet code, and, which would mean to go back and, and pave even what they have.
And see, that's where I think this is applicable. In those conditions, because, you know, you're looking at, at some of the existing manufacturers, or adding on, well, MFG was what, gonna need five or six extra parking spaces. They had a gravel lot, but under the current zoning, they had to hard surface the whole thing. And I think in that case, this wording of allowing that addition to be gravelled would be applicable.
And we were working with them on a variance to reduce that to two.
Right. And with the, the variance and the timeline, sometimes, you know, whether we would, if we would allow gravel on an addition like that, it would eliminate that time delay. You could know more, and now you're dealing with numbers. It's a little-
But it was to serve a new structure, too, so you'd have to figure out a way that it was being fairly applied to everyone.
Yeah. And that's in, when you're looking at manufacturing with multiple buildings, a lot of times they'll have one parking lot, so all the employees come in to a central check-in time clock, in, in and out, so you're not dealing with multiple parking lots on a campus, but just an extension of one existing. Now, if they remote locate somewhere else, then I think that's more appropriate to look at a hard surface.
And then when we, you do that as well, that, that existing parking lot has to come into compliance with the current code, if you're using that as some of your parking spots for your new building as well, so.
And that's where, to use that existing parking lot that's gravel, then expand it with gravel, don't make them come back and, and do the whole thing paved. So, you know, I don't know. I, I'm not opposed to looking at an allowance for gravel. I think we need to consider limiting either a size, or restrict it back to an existing manufacturer with an existing gravel lot. But if they're new, then go with hard surface.
So modifying the language maybe on the nonconforming use, that you can't expand a nonconforming use, is, in that case?
No, not, limit the expansion, and say they can expand, say that they can expand if the lot is gravel, that they can expand with gravel.
Right. So we probably need to look at the language on that, on the nonconforming use as well, is what I'm saying. There might be some additional text amendments, because it talks about that.
Right. You'd need to look at all the, all the areas that it would be applicable.
Do you want to send it back to P&amp;Z? Would that be the next course, Jeff?
I don't want to reject it tonight. I would rather them look at it again, and, because sometimes, you know, the first, the first glance, you don't see all the issues. And I'd like them for, to look at it, and that's, that's my opinion. We got two others.
Yeah, I would, I would love to know exactly what the purpose is, I guess. Do we really have an indication this is gonna help us attract new businesses, or, you know, I mean, everybody grumbles about everything you tell me I have to do. I grumble constantly, Dawn, for saying I have to put a new ramp in front of the donut shop, which is gonna cost me $11,000 so that it's ADA compliant. But you just do it, you know, and I don't, I'm having trouble believing it's gonna really hurt us that much to say you have to have a paved parking lot in your building. So, so I have misgivings about this. Although, again, I haven't talked to any of the people on the Planning Commission that voted 6-0 in favor of it, so they probably know something I don't. So I, I guess I agree. I would like to maybe discuss this further, and maybe talk about tweaking it a little bit, at least.
Yeah, I would, I agree with what Gary said, yeah. I, I think let's maybe clear it, clear it up just a little bit.
Do you want to send any recommendations back to the Planning Commission, or?
Yeah, I think it would help us to define what their initial intent was, and to consider the new construction of a total plant, or expanding an existing gravel lot, if an industry renovates or modifies, that would require additional parking. Pretty much what we talked about is what they need to, I would like for them to consider.
So it wouldn't apply to building any new building, then, right?
Right. If they build a new building, I, and if they have a different impression, then be glad to listen to it.
Still building, adding on to an existing facility, building a new building, they would, if they have a gravel surface now, the intent is to allow them to keep it gravel. And this is strictly talking about a, a new industry that would come in by property, erect a building, and at that point, they would be looking at putting in a hard surface.
Yeah, a new building, a new industry coming in that's gonna locate in an M1 and M2 district, would have a hard surface parking lot. If it's an existing industry in M1 or 2, and they have a gravel parking lot, and they're renovating, increasing capacity, then they could expand with a gravel parking lot. And if they're an existing business in M1 and M2 district that's got a paved lot, then they would increase the pavement.
And also would have to bring it up to code, as, if they're adding additional, like, buildings or whatever, because some of those parking lots would-
The number, you mean, of, yeah.
There's all the off-street, you'd have to meet all the off-street parking requirements. So it may already be paved, but it may have to be reworked, restriped, whatever, to accommodate those additional parking spaces.
Right. Because then, with the increase, they would have to address the ADA issues.
Okay.
And that's for consideration of the Planning and Zoning Board. Okay?
Got it.
So then we'll just take no action on this tonight. Okay, thank you. Next item, reports. Item A, update by KDOT on US 169-160 project. Mr. KDOT, or you Mr.?
Thank you for letting me come before you again. I really feel pretty comfortable coming to this facility in this group right here. I walk in the door, and it's, it's just like walking in the house at home. Dad's home, can I have more money? But unfortunately, we have no more money. But I did want to advise you, in fact, I wish I could clone myself, not for your sake, but for my sake. It was what, a month ago, six weeks ago, I was before you and asked if you were, still set the project East of Independence as a priority for you, and I believe you passed a resolution, and gave that to me, and I sent it on up the line. Just to let you know, it was probably last week, maybe the week before, I saw an email from the Kansas Contractors Association that was sent to their members, advertising or saying that the project east of town would be let November 14. So I just wanted to come by and let you know that everything should be going on November 14, and everything should be a go-for us. There'd be a couple little hiccups that could happen. If the bid came in above the engineer's estimate, it could be rejected. If all the i's were not dotted and t's were not crossed, such as disadvantaged business enterprises and things like that, if they were not checked out, and met the issues or the qualities or the requirements, it could be kicked out. But we've had really good bids coming in, and the contractors know what they're doing, so I'm, I'm very excited. I think on the 14th, the project will be let, and a month or so later, it'll be awarded. That's what I'm hoping, anyway.
You confused me a little bit, sorry. Can we back up? You said, you heard that-
No.
From an email from the Kansas Contractors Association?
Correct. I saw an email. I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. I saw an email.
Right. But you saw an email, that the contractors believe it's gonna be let, but you're with the state. Is that where you get your information, from the contractors?
Let's just say that I've eaten crow in the past, and so until I see the check in the mail on payday's Friday-
Gotcha.
I, I have sat on this for, for a period of time. I have been told that the project was going to be let.
Great.
But I've also been told other information, and had to go back and retract it. So I just wanted to make sure I saw something in black and white.
Gotcha. Thank you. I appreciate that clarification.
Yeah.
You gotta understand the chain of communication sometimes, of the way it goes, and when it gets to the contractors, a bidding service has been notified that the plans are coming out, so that's usually more reliable from them than in-house.
I, like I said, once I saw the, the email go out, I was very much assured that this would happen.
Fantastic.
And I, and I also said I have eaten crow, and it doesn't taste very good, so I wanted to make sure my i's were dotted and t's were crossed.
I, I think you just answered this already, but what's the expected construction period?
I'm going from memory now, and I believe the contract had like 330 days, so that means it'll probably be a two-year project. We will carry traffic through the work zones. There'll probably be a number of different sequences that we will be doing out there, so we'll be messing with traffic periodically throughout the life of the project.
Okay, thank you.
Should be a really good job. I'm, I'm excited about it.
I'm excited now.
There've been a lot of fatalities at that intersection. That'll really be, be a big improvement.
As I remember, 160 will go over 169, and then there'll be ramps to go north and southbound onto 169. So, it, it will be, it should be a foolproof intersection.
Oh, good. Good. And you're out of money in other project areas?
Well, let's just say that the City of Independence was awarded a CCLIP project earlier, and I got to drive out to my home away from home office this morning at about 6:30 in that rain, and I'm really glad you guys are gonna do a white topping there. That'll be very much appreciated.
Yeah, that, on the westbound lane, there's some pavement rolling that the asphalt just can't take that, that abuse.
Really, I think Independence has been pretty progressive. You've received, I, I think, a substantial amount of help from, from the KDOT and stuff. Like I said, went to the secretary to get that ED money, and we were only expecting 200, 250,000, and you got an extra 50 grand out of it, so it worked out pretty well for you.
Yeah, we've really appreciated KDOT with the funds that have come our way. It's really been a good blessing to see the, the improvements. The last few years, we've got a lot of money for milling and overlay-
Yes.
Geometrics, the corridor access management funds, and the economic development. That is really, really gonna improve that part of Peter Pan Road, and, you know, it just has, has changed the appearance coming into Independence.
Yes, it has. You mentioned earlier about, and it was in the course of your parking issue and thing, but you mentioned earlier about gravel alleys washing out onto the roads and stuff. If I remember some of that access management correctly, I believe some of the alleys along 75 were eligible to be surfaced with a hard surface, you know. So that might be another option that you might look at or apply for in the future, too. I'm not sure which ones they were. It's been too long since I've looked at that plan, but I do remember the alleys being mentioned.
Yeah, I, I think it's just about the whole length of the corridor.
Okay.
And, yeah, there's some alleys that really need, need some improvement. They're really deteriorated. We could look at a project. Do you recall offhand the deadline for submitting requests on projects for corridor access management?
No, I do not. I do not.
I guess it never hurts to ask. They can always say no.
Exactly. Exactly. Wiki wheel gets the grease.
It does. Well, we appreciate all you've done, and KDOT has done for Independence. We just really appreciate it.
I appreciate working with all you. It's been very, very pleasant, so.
Well, thank you.
With that said, I'm gonna make like a tree and leave this party. I get to go to Cherryvale and break the good news to them next, so.
Oh, great. Well, thank you, Wayne.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, next item on the agenda is city board minutes. Commissioners have any questions or comments about the board minutes that were included in our packet?
None for me.
None for me, Mayor.
Uh, city managers' comments.
I have no comments, Mayor.
Commissioners' comments, Louis?
I have none today.
Wondered if we could get an update on our projects, on bid dates. Not tonight, but-
Sure.
You could-
Certainly.
Have those, the water treatment plant at the conference, the representative from KDHE said that he had looked at the plan, so we should be getting close to a bid date on that.
Check your AR. I put in some tentative dates. They've given us some tentative dates for the water treatment plant. They're not final yet, but they're tentative, but they have given us a schedule, so hopefully they'll stick to those tentative dates. But I'll give you the rest of them as well.
And on City Hall, the asbestos consultant that was preparing the documents, what the status is-
Yeah, we'll get a status, because they were gonna work with the other contractor for all that together, so. But we have an agreement with them, with the asbestos, so, but I'll get an update and see what, what's happening there.
And on City Hall, the material that's stored in there is gonna be, able to be removed prior to bid, or-
We got about 90, we got about 90% of it removed today. I had a, Dave, Dave Cowan especially led the organization, but all the department heads have got involved, and so we had quite a crew over there. They were wearing protective masks and everything because of the situation over there. But I don't know if Mike can add anything. Mike was over there as well.
They were boxing stuff up, so that'll continue on, making sure everything is boxed correctly. The furniture is going to start being removed tomorrow over into the fire base.
For auction.
Yeah, for the auction purpose with the, the county. So all the documents and records that are gonna be put into the storage containers, will be ready to go, and they're gonna start on that next week.
Okay. And we had the economic development roadwork on Peter Pan, if that's-
I haven't heard anything new on that, on you on that, but again, I'll check on, see if there's an update on when they're gonna let that second phase.
And the status of the research on the cosponsoring, partnering, how's that coming?
I meant to say something about last meeting when it came up. You know, I think when you use the word cosponsoring or co-hosting, it's all in eyes and the beholder. And so if somebody asks you to cosponsor something, I think we should say, ask them to maybe be more definitive in what they feel that entails, because a different group may want you to do more or less than this other group. I mean, I don't know what good it does a city to say, we're gonna define cosponsoring this way, because it may not fit all of these groups. this way, because it may not fit all of these groups.
Well, what if a radical group that is a detriment to society, let me use a broad term, and they want us to co-sponsor with them, and we have no restriction or identifying what we're willing to align with, or what defines that, then they say you co-sponsored this group, this group, and this group, and you have no definition, and you allow them, now how can you not allow us? That's my concern, is that in, in times, we can get some of those groups coming in and request that we partner or co-sponsor, and could create issues. There are some cities that have these, I Googled, uh, just generic, and there's some available, but that would be my concern, is that we, similar as years ago, denied a, a group to assemble or use a park building for their program, and they came back and filed suit against restriction of freedom of speech, and they won. So that's what, you know, I'm just looking at, do we have a definition that a, an organization that would not be deemed appropriate by society, or conflicting the image that we, you know, I don't want to say we feel, because that's subjective, but that would be, you know, you can get into situations that...
I think it's going to boil down to what, what they want you to do when they say they want to be co-sponsored, you know, you can be asked to endorse something, I think you endorse something by like, do a proclamation for Veterans Day, or something. Co-sponsoring to me means they want something from you, like, they want to use a room free of charge, or whatever, and using facilities is, does become a First Amendment issue, because if you allow your facilities to be used to a certain extent, and this is going to be legally, you create an open forum, and once an open forum's created, like the park is an open forum, you cannot restrict somebody's speech in the park, it may be offensive to you, but you cannot restrict it. So if you create an open forum in the veterans' room, you can't restrict who uses it. So I, that's why I say, I think it's kind of in the eyes of the beholder, when the chamber says, "Let's co-sponsor," or the diversity group says, "Let's co-sponsor," you need to ask them, "What do you mean, do you want, you want to use a room, or you want us to endorse endorsement?" It won't be a First Amendment issue, if you choose to endorse a program, I don't think that's a First Amendment issue, that's case-by-case basis.
Yeah, then is it, what we need to do, if all they want is a room free, is just say, "Hey, we want you to give you the room free, will you do it?", and drop the co-sponsor and partnering.
Yeah, I, you know, I think people think it lends legitimacy to their cause, if they can say the city co-sponsors it, and you guys are all nice guys, and you don't want to be said to not co-sponsor it, it becomes kind of a play on words, it's not that you're against what they're doing, it's just that you can be construed as creating an open forum, and open the floodgates, and then you kind of lose control.
Yeah, because I see co-sponsoring as, as siding with them and being part of that, where if they want to use it free, I don't care what they're doing, just you're not going to pay me.
I think there, there's, the policy that's been adopted for this building has categories, and it's almost free of, next to nothing for charitable groups, if I'm, or other governmental entities, so, I mean, they've already got that, they don't have to be co-sponsored to get that.
So maybe we just need to drop the co-sponsoring and partnering.
Yeah, yeah, say, "What do you mean?", you asked the librarian, I think, what she meant, she was here for the diversity group, and I think she just wanted an endorsement, but that's my interpretation, I, I think you can endorse without ramifications.
Okay, I can think of some groups that I wouldn't want to endorse.
Oh, sure.
And co-sponsor and partner, but, you know, if, if we have a plan of giving them a room free, then...
I think there's all, that's in place, isn't it, Kelly? I, I don't know what the...
Well, I mean, it depends on what category it falls in, and nonprofits typically pay a fee that's half the price of the commercial. Um, and then, like, with other, like, schools and other local government entities, if they're going to use the, the, the building for, for a meeting or something, and it's during regular business hours, we typically don't charge for that, now if they use it before or after business hours, then they are supposed to be charged the nonprofit rate, which is the half-price rate, and then the commercial or private functions, wedding, receptions, class reunions, pay the full price, that is what our current policy states. For this building, this is just for this building, I'm not speaking for the board.
Right.
Is that on the city website, City of Independence website, that information?
Yes, the policy, Memorial Hall policy is on the website, yeah, it's on the Memorial Hall page. And they have to sign an agreement, everything to use the facility.
Okay. I'll make some notes.
That wasn't a very good answer, but that's all I know.
Yeah, I think it answered my question. I guess with that, there's no further commissioner comments, public concerns, do we, we didn't receive any signals, okay, so with that, the next item is executive session, um, personnel matters of non-elected personnel, so I would make a motion that we adjourn to executive session under KSA 45-4319, item, um, A, B, or excuse me, item B1, personnel matters of non-elected personnel to discuss personnel performance, um, how long? 15, 20 minutes?
Probably 20.
20 minutes, so that would put us back in session at, uh...
6:50.
6:50.
Yeah.
I did change this watch to daylight savings time, I think. And in session will be the commissioners and the city manager, so I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, motion carried. We're back in session, we're going to extend for another...
15 minutes?
Another 15 minutes, we'll be back in session at 7:05. Got, that's the motion.
Second.
Got a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
He seconded.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. We're back in session, no action taken from executive session, no other business, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
A second?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Last chance, kids.